And we began to see that these politicians, all of whom are Democrats, by the way, really broke it down by race. And I think too, when we take a look at it, to some extent, seeing all the wokeness that has happened in the Democratic Party, and I'm a Democrat, but I have called out my own party on how woeful it has been to see how crazy the the complete identity politics, the complete race-based actions that have really dominated the party today, to an extent that I don't even recognize it any longer.
Hello and welcome to the Alan Phelim Scoop. First off, as you can see, it's just myself, but I wanted to say we have released My Son Hunter DVD. It's available. Yes, have a look here. So you can buy the movie as a streamer, download it, you can buy it as a gift, but you can also buy it as a DVD for all your relatives coming up to Thanksgiving, all your relatives coming up for Christmas, for yourself, for your show to your nephews and nieces when they come around, show it to your children. Let's get the truth about Hunter Biden out there. Let's look at the trailer, actually, of My Son Hunter, which is now available on DVD at mysonghunter.com. Let's watch the trailer.
So I'll tell you what's going down.
You know who I am?
They told me you were VIP, all connected to the government.
What kind of a moron forgets to pick up his laptop at a repair shop? You're a Biden. Act like one.
Everything he built, life, I just ruined it all.
I want to know everything that's on that laptop that can ruin my erection.
My friends, it's time to party!
I'm an artist.
Tell me how I can help you.
But I don't deserve help.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Been through worse.
The smartest man I know, thanks dad. I just wish I could just make some sense to you. I'll never forget Cory Bob. He was a bad dude. No joke. Dad, we were talking about suffering.
I can't seem to find anything but positive stuff on the Bidens.
Who's the point blank for the foreign policy in the Obama regime?
Joe Biden.
So it looks like he needs a billion dollars.
So the obvious next question is, where's Hunter?
I can remember getting paid some money, but I can't remember what for.
Well, my dad says, we never discuss my businesses, period.
Or my cuts.
What's happening in there? Joe's in on it.
Party's over!
You had everything, Hunter, and you threw it all away. You hope the laptop will take down everybody with you.
Get out!
China's not our enemy. They're not bad folks, folks.
I love my dad and I just want to make him proud.
I am the one who brings in all the deals. I am the one. The boy.
That's the trailer. Hunter Biden, played by Lawrence Fox, directed by the great Robert Davi. It's go to mysonghunter.com to buy the DVD. We have, it's actually, it's a great show. It's a great show. We have a couple of really good interviews covering a lot of issues from Texas Civil War, Los Angeles Civil War, Wedding Registry, Civil Wars. Yeah. So first of all, what's on the show? Racism in LA City Council, surely some mistake. Progressives can't be racist, can they? Can they? Of course they can. You know, because if you make everything about identity, then you get identity politics and which is just progressives being greedy racists, you know. Identity politics is really the division of the world among racial, the division of the world spoils by corrupt people among racial lines. That's what it is. So therefore racism is baked into the into the equation. So we bring you the latest on the blue and blue civil war in Los Angeles. And talking of civil war, now everyone is moving to Texas. We ask, could you, could they actually also be moving to a future foreign country? We look at the case for Texas. And of course, we have a happy wedding story. No, no, we don't actually. As Dennis Prager famously said, leftists ruin everything, and now they're ruining their wedding registry. So first off, LA councillors have been caught on tape speaking rather nastily about their fellow progressives. And of course, because they are progressives, it's all about race. It's complicated by, I also think it's very, very simple to make it sense of it all. We will go over now to our interview. There's no one better positioned to tell us what was said, what they were saying, what they were really meaning and why they were saying it than Gloria Romero. She's a former California State Senator and the Democratic Majority Leader of the California State Senate. So she knows the thinking that went behind these comments where they thought it was okay to call the two-year-old child, the two-year-old African-American child of a fellow council member, a monkey to minorities in their own community. Look, we'll go over the whole detail in the interview. So let's go over that interview that I recorded just before we came on air. So as I was saying, I'm joined now by Gloria Romero, who's a former California State Senator and the Democratic Majority Leader of the California State Senate. And she's now heavily involved in the school choice movement. So has been really in the corridors of power in in California and Los Angeles, I suppose, in and out for decades. I think there's no one better positioned to really tell us what what happened and what it means and why it happened. So so welcome, welcome to the show, Gloria.
Thank you so much for having me.
I'm based in Venice, Los Angeles, Venice, California. I have some idea of what went on and some knowledge of it. But for all those people out there who who don't know LA, I will tell them that three council members and a Labour leader were caught on tape during what was a redistricting meeting, discussed redistricting, saying rather racially tinged, let's just say racially tinged comments about other council members, about other communities. Can, can, would you like to tell, say what they said? And then we'll discuss why they said it and what it means.
I mean, first of all, let me just say that this was really horrific. What was, what was captured on tape, what was said, what was said basically in a back room, never meant for public consumption, but it really tore off, you know, sort of like the bandage, which hides and obscures how they say the sausage is made. The first thing that I would say is, of course, too, I did call for the resignation of all of the individuals involved, because this is something that really is, I think, violative of the public trust, of good government, of just basic standards of decency and the characterization that was used. Essentially, for people who haven't seen all the news stories, this has become an international story, as you know.
Yes, yes.
Basically, this was the council president, Nuri Martinez, meeting with two council members, one who had just run unsuccessfully for mayor of Los Angeles, De Leon, and Gil Sadeo, who had just been defeated in the primary for his own reelection. Also, this was not only just a Labour leader, this was the president, the head of the very powerful union movement in LA County, very well-known and oftentimes feared in LA County and in the state of California. So you're talking about very, very powerful individuals. Kevin De Leon had been the president pro tem of the California State Senate. He was an assemblyman when I was in the legislature. Later, he was elected to the Senate. Gil Sadeo, I did serve with him as well. And I will say that, you know, it was very sad knowing these individuals. I didn't really know Nuri Martinez, but I did know Kevin and Gil. And I would say the first thing is, it was sad. I think they've done some good work in their time. I think they've been very, very much in leadership, but it was painful to to go behind closed doors and to listen to what they were saying on tape. I mean, ostensibly, the meeting was about to take a look at redistricting of the city council. And we began to see that these politicians, all of whom are Democrats, by the way, really broke it down by race. And I think too, when we take a look at it, to some extent, seeing all the wokeness that has happened in the Democratic Party, and I'm a Democrat, but I have called out my own party on how woeful it has been to see how crazy the the complete identity politics, the complete race-based actions that have really dominated the party today, to an extent that I don't even recognize it any longer.
Gloria, you may be reluctant to say what they said, and I understand that. And so I'll, I'll do that because it'll come out of my voice. So no one can clip this and claim you said it. You know, they, I suppose the background is that they, you know, the Latina or Hispanic, look, I'm not an expert on this. This is my understanding of this, that the redistricting, everyone wants to grab places to ensure their reelection and for fundraising and all. So there's a lot of tension between the Hispanic members and the black council members and white council members and all these different interest groups. And Mike Bonin, who is my councilman, who is a truly appalling councilman.
I agree with you.
Yes. I mean, he has destroyed Venice. He has destroyed Venice. He and his partner have adopted a child, a black child. Mike Bonin is white. And they said terrible things about this little black child. They said that he was, he needed a beat down. He almost destroyed a floating, the guy is two or three. And of course, I mean, I know young, young men of two or three now there. We have a little young man of two or three, and we call him the terrorist in our, we have him. And we mean that as, 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 as a, as a, as a compliment, but they're, they're, they're quite the, quite the people now. These, and anyway, this child was misbehaving. And they said horrible things of this child. He needed a beat down. They said that Mike Bonin used him like a designer handbag. They, there's also, oh, maybe you'll help me pronounce this, Oaxican immigrants.
Wahaken.
Or how's that? What's that again?
Wahaken.
Wahaken immigrants who, and they're from Mexico, and they described them as little, short, dark people. They also, yeah, George Gascon, who's a terrible Los Angeles District Attorney, possibly worse than Mike Bonin, they said, he's with the blacks. They said, they said, then, then they moved on to, to the Jewish community, saying the Jews have cut their deal with South LA, which is, South LA is an African-American part of LA. So they, did I miss anything there? Did I?
Well, I think to even be more specific, the council president did make a reference to the little boy as being essentially a monkey, using a word in Spanish.
That's right.
That use of the term, I mean, that is the most horrific caricature that has been used historically to describe African-Americans. So I think there was so much that was said about so many people, including poor people. And how do you kind of lobby to basically move out the poor people, move in the people that you want? Sort of this secret meeting in which people were described in the most base horrific terms to describe their national origin or skin color and then poverty status. It was really horrendous, all of their conversations. And also, even though not all of them said the same thing, there was never a correction, an objection. It was as though they heard everything and they acceded to the conversation.
Yes.
But I think really the caricature of the little boy who is African-American as a monkey is just horrific. It was probably the most racially, not only insensitive, just racist language that was used.
No, you can help me there because you could describe someone as a little monkey, right? Or you can describe, I, we describe a little boy in our lives as the little terrorist. You know, we, we don't, you know, it's not, we don't mean it in a nasty way. But that is a racial term in, in, in Spanish, is it?
Yes. Well, well, people can use it overall, but in this context, in what they were describing, their whole, the whole thing was a lament about looking at race and racial politics, which, by the way, I'm going to say is sadly, I think, a glimpse. We got to look at how power is used. You know, the sad thing is, is that, you know, I mean, and again, like I say, I'm a Democrat, but I'm just so disgusted with what I've seen, is how we've seen that, that power, and we talk about unity and the coalition and the rainbow and blah, blah, blah. We saw in that conversation, it was all phony, that basically people go out in public and they talk and they hold hands and they say, we're all together and the bad right wing and the bad Republicans and the bad whoever. But then behind closed doors, all of the power struggle to gain power and access in LA, it comes down to geography and that because, because there is a great deal of segregation in Los Angeles, we find that it becomes a power struggle over geography and skin color. And that's what we saw going on.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to, I didn't want to put you on the spot there. I do want to be fair to these people, right? I don't want to use someone's, you know, I think Roseanne, she, she described Valerie Jarrett as something, and she says she didn't mean it. It was, it was a different context. People do, people use words to describe people and it's taken, a different meaning is taken. But in the context, I've listened to the tape, in the context of the tape, it's clear that there was a racial element to this. I mean, I want to just follow up what you said there. It struck me as very sad to, nowhere in this is anything about helping people. Nowhere in this is anything about, about helping the homeless. And when I say helping the homeless, I mean, getting them off the streets and getting them into crappy houses somewhere or crappy accommodation and get it and, and, and stop the slaughter of the homeless that's on the street. Hundreds of them are dying every year. They're committing crimes. They're destroying communities. And but none of that is mentioned in this conversation. As you say, it's all about getting the poor people out of my constituency or into my constituency to help me or to cut this race off so they won't vote for me. Or there's nothing about going out into these communities and saying, vote for me because of my policies.
Right.
Vote for me because I have the solution. He doesn't, let's have a debate. None of that. It's, it's, it's a power grab. It's, and they want, they want, they want LAX in their constituency. And, you know, there's no votes in LAX, but there's lots of money there. LAX is spending tens of billions of pounds now on, on construction. And believe me, I know that because I live beside it and I frequently go there. And you basically have to leave an hour to almost crawl through the traffic at times. Sorry to go on at length, but, but.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
But if I can add to that, you're exactly right. And also the fact that there's money in LAX, and even more importantly, for thinking about politicians, it's that money means contracts. And who, who awards the contracts? The city council overall. And so whoever is the council member for that particular district in that, you know, whoever LAX that jurisdiction is, you become very powerful because you now get to choose which vendors, which contractors, is it going to be no bid? We've seen controversy on the LA County Sheriff, you know, with the LA County sheriffs, the LA supervisor as well, and the awarding of, of contracts. So it becomes about ultimately campaign donations. A bottom line is, they always say, follow the money. And that conversation, and I've, I don't know that we've even heard all of the tapes. I understand that there's nine of them. There may be more. We don't know all the period of time. But that, what we have heard so far, really just opened up the, the, the window so that we could actually be like a fly on the wall and listen to what is said and how people plan and plot and deceive and disparage groups in order to gain power in the city of the angels.
The LAX thing is very instructive because if they were actually, I could see people, you know, redistricting to get their people in to make change, right? But, but the clamor for LAX shows it's all about power and it's all about money. It's not about helping homeless. It's not about helping property tax, you know, reducing the property tax. It's not about making the streets cleaner or whatever it is the city council does. The desire to get, who wants LAX, you know? And the answer is, they want to give out these no bid contracts to their friends and their friends then give either campaign donations or help their not-for-profit that their families work for.
Right.
We've seen that too. And that to me is, is, you know, I mean, Dennis Prager famously said, you know, we shouldn't, Hillary Clinton was accused of, of saying something antisemitic during a, during a fit of temper. And Dennis Prager wrote an op-ed saying, we shouldn't be condemning people for their worst private moment. We should be condemning them for their public actions. You know, I mean, everyone says terrible things in private, or maybe some people don't, but you know, we do, you know, we should, to me, the, yes, the terrible things they say in private, they're pretty bad now. They're pretty bad. It's unforgivable. But then to be fighting over LAX shows, that's, to me, that's a public action. That is something, this, these people don't care about, they don't care about the homeless. They don't care about the people in South LA. They don't care about the suburban people in Venice. They, they just care about stuffing their own pockets and gaining their own power and the next election. And they're moving up, you know, Kevin De Leon, I mean, he did well in the mayoral election too, for, for independent, was it mayor? No, the governor who was running for governor. He did well. He got glowing.
Well, that, I think you're mixing him up, though. That was Larry Elder. And I do want to point this out. And see, here's where you find the hypocrisy overall. And first of all, you know, I agree, I agree with you. Mike Bonin, you know, was my representative. I've ended up not living in Venice any longer, but was my representative. I was absolutely appalled. And there's a reason why that we, including myself, signed the petition to get him recalled from office. He was, I mean, just, I just think the worst example of a so-called public servant than anybody I've ever met. Having said that, I don't support him. I do grieve with him that it was his son that was despicably described. But here's the contradiction, though, and I do want to point this out. You brought up the candidate who ran for governor, Larry Elder, who is African-American. I actually supported him in running in the recall election. And you may remember that right there in Venice, right in Mike Bonin's district, Larry Elder was physically assaulted, not just called a name, but physically assaulted by someone who was dressed in a gorilla mask and physically assaulted. My daughter was there that day and friends that I had. And as they were walking with Larry Elder through the streets of Venice, Mike Bonin's district, there were dogs that were nipping at them. The N-word was repeatedly thrown at them. My daughter and her friend, who happens to be African-American, were called the most ugly sexist terms as well. And, and, you know, I mean, this was a hate crime. The only elected official who stood up and called it for what it was, was actually Sheriff Villanueva. Mike Bonin remained silent. So I just find it hypocrisy. Here was the case of a grown African-American man, and one day his little boy is going to grow up and be an African-American adult male. But Mike Bonin chose not to condemn that. But he cried tears when his little boy was insulted and, and, and hurt as he should. But there was nothing when Larry Elder was attacked. And so, you know, you find the hypocrisy. Some of these very woke politicians use race when it benefits them.
Yes. No, the saddest thing of this, you know, I've been slightly flippant here, but to me, the awful, one of the awful things with this is that it, that it makes Mike Bonin look good, that it gives him sympathy. Mike Bonin has destroyed Venice. Mike Bonin has, Mike Bonin has blood on his hands.
Right.
There are people who are dead today. There was a man attacked in his wheelchair by a homeless man. There's people murdered by homeless. There was a guy stabbed in a Del Taco, sitting, a guy in a wheelchair, sitting, eating his, in Del Taco, two weeks ago, and a homeless guy came in and stabbed him in the neck. There are people who are dead now because of Mike Bonin's encouraging of homeless to come here and then saying, oh, look at this problem we have. We need to raise billions to solve this problem. And again, giving out contracts to his developer friends to build affordable housing that costs $1 million a unit or $700,000 a unit. Who wouldn't want that contract?
Right.
I mean, it's, so you're correct that, that Mike, the, the use of racial outrage is very, very selective for these politicians. I mean, I'd forgotten, of course, because it didn't get as much publicity at the time, I'd forgotten about that. I mean, yes, Larry Elder was attacked by someone in a gorilla mask. I mean, to me, I'm a big debunker of racial hoaxes. And if I had heard that described with, I would say, that's a racial, that was a hoax. That didn't happen. It's like one of those, Jussie Smollett getting attacked by two guys wearing MAGA hats in, in Chicago. You go, nah, couldn't have. I mean, imagine a black politician getting attacked by a man in a gorilla mask. Come on, that, that, it happened. It happened. It's on camera and Mike Bonin stayed quiet.
Right. Exactly. And so that's why now, you know, I mean, the LA council, it's in a state of disarray. There's discussions going on. I think we do need essentially almost like a purge of this council because we've had members who have been investigated by the FBI, have already resigned. They are, you know, going through trials. We see corruption. Even the mayor of Los Angeles, we've found him being investigated over, you know, his, his silence and his potentially not telling the truth over sexual assault in, or sexual harassment in his own office. But I do think though, that what's important though, is that clearly Mike Bonin should not emerge a hero out of this. This is somebody who, thank God, he's going, don't let the door hit him on the way out. You know, quite frankly, I mean that, of course, too rhetorically, not actually. But, but I think that this is somebody who, who, there was a reason why so many of his constituents signed the recall petition. And at this point in determining going forward, I find it almost laughable that Mike Bonin is trying to call the shots on who needs to resign, et cetera. I've called for the resignations of the remaining members, but ultimately, I think that's going to be up to their constituents, what they want to see them do. There is a recall process. And if the constituents in the first, in the 14th council manic districts, if they want their council members gone, then, you know, hopefully they will start that process to get them removed if they do not resign on their own. But for Mike Bonin to try to lead that charge, it's like, that's not even believable.
Please, let's not, I just hope one outcome of this is that Mike Bonin is not seen as some kind of, you know, elder statesman who, who deserves our sympathy. He, you know, he deserves our sympathy for what was said about his son. But, but that, that is the extent of it. I mean, one, I mean, as an, as you can hear, I'm not from around these parts from my accent.
Yes.
One thing that, one thing that struck me when I moved here, well, you know, this is LA, many, you know, many things struck me, but was, was the corruption, actually? I had never thought that LA would be as corrupt as it is. I mean, every week, there's a councilman getting arrested. There's a, you know, Southern Cal, University of Southern California corruption. I mean, even Karen Bass, who is running for mayor, I mean, she was involved in something, you know, there is a woman who has pled guilty to giving out master's degrees to important people. And one of the people who got the master's degree was Karen Bass.
Had a $95,000 scholarship.
Yes. And this brings me to my second question. When you get rid of, I see, when you get rid of ideology and you break, and I suppose that maybe the Democrat Party now is all about identity politics. When you divide people up into identities, when you say, I am Hispanic, I am black, I am gay, I am transgender, I am Muslim, you know, and, and you don't, and that's it, right? I am a woman. Then, then you, then everyone, then you have power between, between different blocks. And it's about power rather than ideology, rather than policies. And I mean, almost these conversations behind closed doors are the natural follow-on from that divisive, in my opinion, from the way the party has become the, a series of power blocks, a series of identities rather than an ideology. So, and then when you have power blocks, it becomes about dividing the spoils rather than doing the best for the people. Am I right there or am I just?
I would agree with you 100%. And like I said, I say that as a Democrat, that, that what we saw and what we are seeing within the Democratic Party is that wokeness over just basically skin color is destroying, I think, the party. And we're going to see elections coming up in, what, less than about 20 days away? And we're going to see, I think, largely voters going out with a rejection of this. You know, I believe in representation. I believe in, you know, in affirmative action, but I don't believe in the quota. I don't believe in just simply saying, okay, you are basic. I don't believe in just simply saying, okay, you are basically a woman and you're African American. Oh, and Asian as well. So great. You're going to be the vice president. Or you're going to get Secretary of Transportation because we need to have, you know, talented, you know, gays and lesbians. We're going to find, you know, the, the Health and Human Secretary because you're Latino and I need a Latino in my cabinet. That's sadly what we have seen with the current administration, but it's happening at all levels, I think. And so, I mean, going back to it, I think this conversation, this tape really exposed what's going on. But it's not limited to this. I think overall, even though people go out and they speak publicly about unity and blah, blah, blah. Sacramento, in terms of redistricting, although we do now have an independent commission that decides this. And that's what the local city council has to do. But then once again, who appoints the members? You still go back to having that. So until we get to real independence on how redistricting is done and take it out of the hands of council members, they can't appoint or anything. We've got to figure out what's the best route to do that. Then we're going to keep seeing these kinds of very racialized politics.
Yeah, I know. I think, I mean, I'm not quite sure, but I think Republicans are all for, you know, local control of redistricting. And basically that allows gerrymandering. And I come from Northern Ireland, which was a gerrymandered state. And there was gerrymandering was in, we, we in kind of, we Irish people invented gerrymandering and gave it to Americans. And then we copied it back. So I'm not, I'm not a big fan of gerrymandering. But I'm also for, for, for issues of fairness, but also, and I think gerrymandering encourages staleness of politics. It, it's a very anti-conservative thing, actually, gerrymandering, because it, it knocks out the market forces that force people to listen to, I mean, why weren't they behind these closed doors talking about crime? It's because they don't fear getting unelected. They don't fear not being elected because they have gerrymandered. And, you know, maybe, you know, because they're, they're making sure that their power blocks are there and they're going to get reelected. They're not concerned about crime or fighting crime. So maybe we should, you know, look at some kind of super duper, almost computer organized redistricting, because it's, it's, it does encourage this kind of behavior and thinking, in my opinion.
Right. And I would share that with you. So I think that that's going to be the next step forward is what will be done. Let's see how we get through this, what's happening with the LA City Council. I think one issue though, that we do have to look at is that to a large extent, I do think we need to figure out, how did the tape come to be? We have seen that not only, I mean, within the Democratic Party, there is essentially a war going on between the socialists, you know, the democratic socialists of America and sort of the mainstream machine Democratic Party. That is clashing right now. We've seen recent opinion pieces, writing, Solidera Sua, for example, has written about the rise of the socialists in LA. And so there is a fight right now to basically take over the city council. And I think the releasing of this tape, probably even the taping of it, which by the way, is illegal in California. So that should be investigated. You know, it sounds like those offices were bugged. We've learned a lot, but, but ultimately, you know, I mean, there are privacy considerations that we should have and respect, I think, in the state of California. But I think it shows that there's an internal war going on with the far-left democratic socialists trying to take over essentially the, the city of Los Angeles. And I think there's this part and parcel of that.
I, I would suspect that too. And yeah, because, yeah. And you can be sure that the tips have, you know, the, the worst tips will be released. Yeah, no, I think you're right.
Right before elections. These tapes were a year, were made a year ago, it seems, but they were just released a few weeks ago.
Well, so tell me what you're at now. Tell me what, what you're, you're no longer involved in day-to-day politics. But what, what, what's your project now? School choice, I believe?
I'm still working on school reform, school choice. I've just started a new charter network in, actually it's in Orange County called Explore Academy. We have seen increasingly, you know, I believe in school choice. I was the chair of the Education Committee in the California State Senate. And basically we assign kids based on zip code where they live. And so even if a school is identified as chronically underperforming, that just means failing, quite frankly, we still force kids to go there even when that school is not performing. And we can look at the data, et cetera. So that's my major issue. I'm still working on that. Would love to see some major changes come about with introduction of opportunities, scholarships and others in California. Additionally, and let me just turn over here, I, I recently wrote a book. I'll hold it up right here. Those are members, listeners to read. It's called Just Not That Likeable, The Price All Women Pay For Gender Bias. And so I write about women in power, women as executives, women in political spheres, women in the educational arena as well, that the more, the, the higher up, the ladder we go, women begin to get attributed characteristics as being, you know, whereas a male might be seen as being a leader, assertive. Women, quite frankly, get called a [BLEEP], you know, that we're aggressive, not that likable. And so I, I lay it out. And so I would encourage people to read it. It's available on amazon.com. So that's what I've been doing, writing and, and, and doing reforms still on education.
So it's, the book is Just Not That Likeable by Gloria Romero, available in all good online bookstores, I'm sure. And where can people, Twitter, where can people find you?
People can find me on Twitter, at Gloria J Romero.
One thing that struck me was how little I knew about the city council members, you know, these, these are people, they're not out getting my vote. They're not out earning votes. They're out earning, they're out, they redistrict districts to ensure they get vote, and the people they care about are the vendors who build LAX. They don't care about my vote. You never see them from one day to the next in, in the districts and no one knows their names. I knew Kevin DeLeon because I'd read a, a gushing profile of him. I think, did he, did he run, did he run for governor or?
He ran for mayor of the city of Los Angeles. He had run before for the, against Dianne Feinstein for United States Senator. And remember, he was just elected to the city council and right away he decided to run for mayor of Los Angeles. I think that was a big mistake, but I think sometimes you get big egos.
Yes. Well, you see, when you, if you've lack of challenge, if everyone tells you you're wonderful and you get reelected without doing any work, then why wouldn't you go to the next level? And I suppose that's probably why we have Kamala Harris as Vice President right now. But that's a whole other topic. So thank you very much, Ms. Romero, and we hope to talk to you again soon.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
Well, there you have it. As I say, if, if everything, racism is the, I was going to say the inevitable outcome of identity politics. It's not, it's actually the beginning of identity politics. If you divide society among racial lines, you divide politics on racial lines, not on ideas, then it just becomes a power grab and a division of spoils. I think that's why there's so much corruption. That was one of the things that surprised me about Los Angeles City Council, was you had all these progressives who were incredibly corrupt. I mean, even Karen Bass, who's running for mayor, she was touted as a future vice president the last time around. She received a free master's in social policy from the University of Southern California, I think, yep. And the person who gave that has just been pled guilty to corruption for giving another prominent member of the community a free master's for, for favors for the School of Social Policy. And, I mean, the, the corruption is, it's, it's both petty and it's massive. It's mind-boggling, the corruption. And I think that comes because of the progressive idea of identity politics. Because suddenly it becomes about grabbing the spoils for your community as opposed to helping your, helping everyone in your community. It encourages, it encourages corruption rather than, rather than solves it. And now, this interview is fun, but, but careful, by the way, what you laugh at. A lot of things we used to laugh at are now happening. So Daniel Miller is leading the movement for the secession of Texas from the Union. I wanted him to state his case because everyone I know is moving to Texas. So I want to know, well, I need my passport to go and visit them. And we also discuss the surprising people who will be the most vigorous opponents of Texas. And we also ask, you know, can they keep the lights on? Which is, is not a joke actually, because don't forget, the lights did go off in Texas not so long ago. So let's, let's go over that interview now. So I'm joined now by Daniel Miller. Very happy to have Daniel on the show. He's the president of the Texas Nationalist Movement and been an outspoken advocate for Texas independence since, since the nineties. The reason we have him on is because of his book, Texas. It's called Texas, Why And How Texas Will Leave The Union, which is a very controversial book title. So welcome to the show, Daniel.
Hey, thank you so much for having me.
So for those who don't understand, I know because of my British UK background, what Texas means and where it comes from. Tell them what the word Texas means and what its origins first. Let's start off with that.
You know, for, for those that are familiar with the term Brexit, Texas is no different. You know, Brexit referring to Britain's exit from the European Union. Texas, talking about Texas withdrawing from the Union, becoming a self-governing independent nation. Now, the first time we, we really saw the mashup of those two was many years ago during the, the Greek Euro crisis, when there was a lot of talk about Greece exiting the Euro and, you know, reinstituting the Dragma. But it, it really took on sort of that, that exit portmanteau when Britain began to talk about withdrawing from the European Union. And so exit has been appended to pretty much every type of exit you could possibly imagine. You know, we're talking here about Texas. We see California Cal exit. We see flex it for Florida. Plus, you know, any number of eurosceptic movements that are happening right now where they're talking about withdrawing. So that's essentially where it comes from. You know, in our case, Texas is just us talking about Texas reasserting its status as an independent nation.
Yeah. I mean, reasserting a status, I suppose I'm not a, I'm not a huge American history buff, but I suppose was Texas an independent nation at one stage?
It, it was. From about 1836 to 1845, Texas was known as the Republic of Texas and had international relations with, you know, other countries around the world, operated functionally as an independent nation before it entered the Union. But, you know, this is, this is really, I think, the important issue that people need to understand, particularly here in the United States. When, when we're talking about states and their relationship with the federal government, there is this misconception that exists that's not rooted in the Constitution or the history of the United States as an institution at all. And that's that the federal government somehow created the states and the states are creatures of the federal system. And that's just not the case at all. It never was the case from the, the, the framers of the Constitution. And it wasn't the case all the way through the history. And it just, people began to act in, in more recent years, over the last 100 years, as though that were the case. What, what you have to remember is that the United States of America as a political and economic institution is functionally no different than political and economic unions around the world. States created the Union. They, it's, it's very clear when you begin to read Article One, Section 10 of the US Constitution, when you begin to look at, say, the 10th Amendment to the Constitution, that states are functionally sovereign entities.
I've, I've, again, I've even a lot of questions about that, but just to, just to tell people, you know, you may think this is a ludicrous idea, radical, you know, it never happened. Look, they said that about Brexit, the idea, I mean, I, I agree with you. There's this, it seems to be a, I think, I can't remember who said it, but it's, it's one of my favorite scenes. The, the illusion of permanency is the folly of every age, you know? Every, every, we all think this is how it's going to be. And we all also always think that it's going to move forward along this line, right? Now Brexit showed that, that the illusion of permanence, permanency was a folly. You know, just because something has been that way does not mean it will always be that way. And it can change very, very quickly. So with, with that said, I mean, again, as I say, my history isn't my strong, American history isn't my strongest point. But wasn't there a, a, a small internal conflict about this very issue?
What a diplomatic way to put it.
You know, some, I, I believe there was a couple of skirmishes, interactions or riots or whatever they want to call them. I don't know what they call them then.
Yeah, we, we refer to it as the great 19th century kerfuffle. So, no, look, and, and the thing that I think people need to understand is that, you know, this, this issue that you're seeing popping up right now is not some sequel or repeat of what happened in the 19th century, right? And, you know, we, we have critics of the, the issue counter with that. They, they want to return back to the 19th century. But what I do is, is I, I remind them that they're the ones that are stuck in the past here. You know, you look at the end of World War Two, there were roughly 54 recognized, fully governing, self-governing nations around the world. And by the end of the 20th century, there were 192. Those countries didn't fall from space. The earth didn't get any bigger. What, what we had was at, at the midpoint of the 20th century, this real, I guess, very clear expression of the right of self-determination for people and the right of self-government. And oddly enough, it's really rooted in some of the Jeffersonian principles that, that led the colonies to withdraw from the United Kingdom, from Great Britain. And, and so, you know, it's, it's actually a touchstone back to those Jeffersonian principles that are, that are codified, I believe, in, in the Declaration of Independence. And of course, here in Texas, founded the Texas Declaration of Independence from 1836. So this right of self-government is, is absolutely alive and well. And I think from the, the perspective of people that are mourning the loss of, of their rights and the loss of a constitutional republic that the United States of America used to be, embracing this idea of returning to self-governing independent nation-states is a welcome reprieve from that misery.
Well, perhaps you should just rename Texas Ukraine and then people might, might see the, the benefits of self-determination. And I'm joking there, but, but you're correct. The right of self-determination seems to be, is, 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 is rising. And when Britain does it, when the United Kingdom does it, it's seen as bad. When Ukraine does it, it seems as, it's seen as good. When, when a president gets elected in the United States, put in America first, that's bad, you know? So when a president gets elected and Ukraine says Ukraine first, that's good. So, so there is, there is a rising tide of nationalism and self-determination across the world. And it's been ongoing, I suppose, since, you know, it's debatable how long it's been ongoing, but it's definitely there.
Look, it's, it's the natural, and not to interrupt, but look, it's the natural counterpoint to globalism, right? So we, we have had 70-plus years of globalism shoved down our throats that, that mimic more that Stalinist central planning system in the Soviet Union than what the founders and the framers of the United States or those of Texas fought for, you know? And what we're seeing here, this rise of popular nationalism around the world is really the only true counterpoint to globalism. Globalism is a cancer. And you can't, you cannot have just a little bit of it. You've got to really sort of put it off to the side. Otherwise you wind up with this form of neo-Marxism that we all, I, I think people like us that are freedom lovers find absolutely abhorrent.
I would, I would argue though, I mean, I, my understanding of the Constitution is I don't want to get into, that there's no real mechanism for a state to succeed, is there?
Right. So if, if you're going to contrast it with what happened with Brexit, right? Brexit was pretty simple. The people expressed their will in a referendum. And then there was an Article 50 trigger. And, and that was, you know, that was obviously baked into the treaty. Here, there is no constitutional mechanism spelled out because there didn't need to be one, right? So just short, just to, to make it brief, what you find in Article One, Section 10 of the United States Constitution is a list of everything that states are forbidden from doing, okay? Withdrawing is not in that list. So you have to look toward the 10th Amendment. The 10th Amendment, I think, really helps people understand the mindset of the framers of the Constitution in regard to the, the federal and the state relationship. And, and the 10th Amendment is quite simple. Any powers not granted to the federal government or prohibited to the states are reserved to the states and the people respectively. So essentially the Constitution operates as a limiting document. If the document doesn't say it's under federal control or federal authority, then it is reserved to the states without question.
Okay, okay, okay. So we now have a mechanism. So we've, we've agreed that it's not a historic aberration, that it could be historically, it's, it's a, it could, it could even be seen as, as an inevitable part of progress. So we've, we've agreed that it's not a historic aberration, that it could be historically, it's, it's a, it could, it could even be seen as, as an inevitable, uh, part of progress. Uh, we've established a mechanism. Now, what would it look like? Would you have a national anthem?
Well, we're, we're.
Would you play in the World Cup? I don't know. Would you be in the World Series? I don't, I, tell me.
From a process standpoint, you know, we, we, it all starts with a vote, right? Before we even talk about what it looks like on the other side, you gotta talk about what, what the, you know, the, the process to get there. And it really starts with a referendum, very much like we saw, uh, in Britain with Brexit. Article One, Section Two of the Texas Constitution reserves to the people the right to reform, alter or abolish our government in such manner as we may think expedient. So our, you know, constitutionally, Texas has to put it to a vote. But beyond that, it's a matter of carrying out the will of the people of Texas. And so there are really four, uh, key issues that have to be resolved post-exit vote. Uh, there are constitutional issues, statutory issues, international covenants, treaties and agreements. And then finally, the negotiated issues with the federal system. So, uh, you know, from a constitutional perspective, we have to make some minor changes to our constitution because just like every state, we have a state constitution and it very clearly mimics and mirrors what would be a constitution for a self-governing independent nation. Then we have statutory issues, AKA, we have to build some laws around some of those constitutional changes. Have to assume some of the, the programs and functions, uh, that have been previously done by the federal government. Then we need to engage in international covenants, treaties and agreements. That would be trade agreements, travel agreements, conventions on things like international air traffic control, very sort of mundane things, but, but important nonetheless. And then finally, we get to the, the negotiated issues with the federal government. For example, uh, what would a mutual defense compact look like if we were to engage in something along those lines? Uh, what would trade and travel look like between the two? Uh, banking, you know, there are some, you know, what, what's going to happen with, say, social security, uh, Medicare trust fund money? Uh, so there are things that, that have to be done, but the distance between where we are and where we need to be is not nearly as great as some people would imagine.
Okay. So we've established that it, that it's a part of, it could be part of a process. We've established how it could be done. We've established what will happen after it's done. Why, 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 why does Texas need it? Isn't Texas prosperous enough as it is? Why does Texas need to leave the United States, leave this, this, this great idea?
Well, look, I'll, I'll, I'll put it to you this way, right? I, I could talk about the, um, decades-long issues with the federal government and our border with Mexico. Uh, you know, I could talk about how that's grown into an invasion. I could talk about how they've debased our money and monetary policy has tanked us. I could talk about federal, uh, regulatory accumulation. I could talk about the fact that Texas overpays anywhere from a hundred and three to a hundred and sixty billion dollars annually into the federal system. I could talk about how the federal government conspires every day to erode and destroy our fundamental God-given rights. But I'll put it to you this way, uh, in a way that's very non-Texas specific. And it's simply this, uh, imagine for a moment that Texas or any state for that matter was already a self-governing independent nation, right? We had control over our border and immigration policy, uh, we had control over our monetary policy or our military and defense policy. Uh, you know, we had our own embassies and passports, our own trade deals. Uh, we even had our own, uh, you know, Olympic team, right? If you wanted to go that far.
Own soccer team as well?
Yeah, our, yeah, well, yep, we could, we can go soccer too, or football is, you know, they refer to it there. Um, don't, let's not have a conversation about Manchester City, okay? Uh, but anyway, so imagine all of those things were true, right? Imagine all of those things were true and we were sitting currently in a self-governing independent nation. And instead of talking about withdrawing from the Union, we were talking about whether or not, uh, Texas or any state should join the Union. Knowing everything we know about the federal government today, today, would you vote to join? And if you wouldn't vote to join, then why in the world would you ever stay one day longer than you have to?
Well, that, I mean, that's very similar what happened really with the European Union, right? People joined on one basis and over a very short period of time, the European Union turned into something that it said it wasn't going to be. And it was something, Britain, people don't remember this, Britain had a referendum to join the European Union. Back when it was a trading block in this, in nineteen, in the mid-seventies, the, the first referendum. And they, they voted overwhelmingly to join. And, uh, then the European Union became a, not a monetary, not a trade, uh, block, but a monetary and political block. Ever-increasing union dominated by Germany, uh, and as we see now, Germany is dominated by Russia. Uh, so, so that, you know, Britain voted, Britain would not have voted to join the European Union as it was. So they voted by a narrow majority to, uh, to, to leave it as it was. So, yeah, I can, I can, I can definitely see the similarities there and I, and I appreciate that. Um, I mean, so we've, we've gone through all those steps and what it looks like now, but let's talk with the, the hard politics of this. There's a couple of things that come to mind. First of all, the biggest opposition to this won't be from big government Democrats. It'll be from Republicans in DC who don't want to lose Texas House, House seats and Texas senators. Because they'll view it as being in a permanent minority then in, in the country. I mean, by the way, which is a terrible way to view anything because you're really wiping, you know, you're, you're saying we're never going to win this and it's really, you know, it's, it's not, you know, it's, it says a lot about, uh, Republican politics in DC. But they, they won't, they will not want this because it'll mean a, they'll fear it's a permanent minority for them.
You know, for, look, from a political standpoint, um, you know, pretty much what the voters are concerned about outside of Texas. Uh, or really the, the political establishment, I think speaks volumes as to what this real battle is. It's not the battle that, that we've all been told it is of Democrat versus Republican. It's really the political establishment versus the people. Uh, and, you know, and so when you, when you look at that, you also have to remember that this is a state-by-state vote, right? So Texas, the only people that are going to have a say in this referendum, uh, are Texans, right? Texas voters will be the ones that ultimately make this decision because that's the way self-determination works. Now granted, will the political establishment pour a billion dollars to, you know, initiate their own version of Project Fear on us? Absolutely. Uh, but here's what we know about support for Texas today. When we founded the T N M back in two thousand and five, uh, support for Texas independence was in single digits. Uh, now I like to, I like to remind people that even though we were in single digits, we've always polled higher than the approval rating of the US Congress, which polls, you know, their approval is somewhere right or below, right above or below that of leprosy on any given day, right? Yeah. So, uh, you know, from that, we, you know, we saw us cross.
Benefits of, benefits of leprosy are sometimes.
Well, it's definitely more pleasant than, than Congress, right?
Yeah, yeah, tell me.
We crossed a major threshold in twenty fourteen, right? When we, when we polled for the first time in third-party polling, a majority of Texas Republicans, right about half of independent voters and, uh, over a third of Democrats. And then this year, when the Survey USA poll was released back in June or July, um, we showed support here in Texas of seventy-six percent of Republicans, fifty-four percent of Democrats and fifty-three percent of independent voters. So, um, you know, the, the political establishment can, you know, they can want all they want to, they cannot like this. But the fact of the matter is, is that Texas is, is showing the way. We are showing that the people, the people here in this state can make a choice of self-government. We're making a positive case for independence, uh, that addresses all, all the fundamental grievances that we have with the federal system. And we are setting example for other states where they are beginning to have this exact same conversation as to whether or not the federal system is fit for purpose for their people.
Well, so tell me about that polling. Um, tell me how it went from where it was to where it is now and what that says. Tell me about the numbers.
Well, look, I mean, you know, beyond the numbers, what it took was a, a lot of work. Uh, when we founded the, the T N M in two thousand and five, there was no real political advocacy organization creating pressure for this, engaging the Texas voters. Uh, not that the sentiment wasn't there, right? I mean, Texans were some of the first people to slap us a seat bumper sticker on the back of their pickup trucks when they didn't like something that was going on with Washington DC, but no one here in Texas was really advocating for a real political path to making it happen. So, uh, one of the reasons that the T N M was founded for that purpose, to create a political framework. And so, uh, we began immediately to engage Texas voters to get them, you know, help them understand the issue. That there was a legitimate path forward on this issue that was not radical, that was, you know, that was very well thought out. Uh, then four years later in two thousand and nine, we began to engage legislators on the issue, first with the state sovereignty issues, uh, and then on this issue. And so last session, you know, that led us to last session of the Texas Legislature, getting the Texas Independence Referendum Act actually filed and signed on to, uh, by several legislators. So, you know, when you see this sort of public sentiment, when you see the Republican Party of Texas at its convention add two planks to its platform, this convention calling for a tax it vote. Uh, when you see the legislation filed, when you see all of the progress that we've made, um, I, I think it speaks volumes that this is no longer a hope, wish or a dream, it's an inevitability. All we're doing now is we're discussing the timeframe.
How would things look differently in an independent Texas? And what would you get, right? And, you know, how would, how would it improve, uh, the lives of Texans?
Well, look, we, uh, we'll just take, we can take one issue or two issues. I mean, we can take, we can make the economic case or we can take the, uh, the case that, um, of, of the border, right? The border and immigration polled together for the last fifteen years have been the number one concern for Texas voters. As it stands right now, through federal mismanagement and frankly, their intentional mismanagement of the border, uh, situation. We're in a, we're, uh, Texas is in a place right now where all of our major cities poll in the, or show statistically in the top five for sex trafficking and human trafficking. Uh, Texas has become the number one state for that. We have the cartels that are effectively in control of the Rio Grande Corridor. And every single solitary month, we have more illegal immigrants interdicted on our border. Uh, than the number of troops that landed on the beaches of Normandy at D-Day. So, you know, it is by all definition an invasion, especially one that is facilitated when, you know, when the cartels are a major participant, but is also facilitated by our tax money, right? Where the federal government is not only incentivizing, um, the, the invasion on our border. What they are doing is they are smoothing the path to make it happen by offering inland transportation and benefits. I mean, um, you know, they're offering, they're giving illegal immigrants, uh, that have, you know, crossed illegally, that have no background checks, none of these things. They're giving these guys cell phones, uh, using our tax money that are probably better than the cell phones that you and I carry around, right? And, and we're seeing this massive increase in crime and strain on infrastructure. So you've got this complete imbalance. Well, the only way that Texas, the only options available to Texas right now to, to deal with the situation are, uh, declared invasion, right? Which is something that, that our, our governor can do, deploy the, the full force of the Texas Military Department down there, fully militarizing the Texas Military Department. Um, and, and, you know, essentially lead down the path to a constitutional crisis because the federal government will not accept it. Ultimately leading to Texas having to withdraw from the Union. Or option two is capitulate and let it happen, right? There, there are really no half-measures that solve the problem. So, you know, you look at what Texas can do as a self-governing independent nation, both of those paths lead to the inevitable conclusion that the only way that we can secure our borders and come up with a sane immigration policy, uh, is to become a self-governing independent nation because that is a right of every self-governing independent nation to manage its borders.
Uh, the thing I know Texas for the most recently, because we did a lot of work on fracking in the past and energy, uh, was Texas, Texas has its own independent energy grid. But a few years ago, the lights almost went out in Texas. And this was something that they were in charge of. Maybe you're going to tell me something different, but to me, it's not a good sign that we can trust Texas Republicans or Texas. You know, the, the, that, that the independence of Texas is a panacea to all your ills. Uh, the lights almost went out, a hundred people died in Texas where there's oil literally sitting in a puddle over there. You couldn't keep the lights on and I, I know why you couldn't keep the lights on. And it was the, 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 the embrace of renewables, the embrace of, um, silly ideas, the, the embrace to look virtuous, the, the, oh, oh, you know, many, there was many reasons, but these were Texans who did it. Or perhaps you're going to tell me something different, but why wouldn't what happened to the power grid happen to other parts of Texas infrastructure or economy?
Well, so let's, let's break down Snowpocalypse twenty twenty-one, right? So we understand and, and are accurately talking about the problem. So you have, you have an issue there where the federal government fundamentally upset the market forces that deal with the energy production and distribution here in Texas. Like they do everything else, right? The federal government's motto should be one size fits none. So back during the Obama administration, when they started pushing out green energy subsidies, uh, what happened was that all of these private companies that were engaging in power generation projects that were either coal-fired or gas-fired wound up shuttering those projects because, uh, renewable energy was subsidized by the federal government to the point that those companies and their power generation could not compete, right? So you go back to that era during the Obama administration and you see a slew of power generation projects, either coal-fired or gas-fired that were shuttered or canceled because those companies would not have been able to compete in the market in power generation. So because the federal government put their thumb on the scale and they took tax money and they made the renewables, uh, the, you know, the dominant market. Where, where's the market going to go? They're going to go where the money is because that's where power generation was, was coming from.
Yeah, I, I, you know, but just to interrupt you, sorry to interrupt you, but didn't Texas offer subsidies to the, and just to explain to people, what happened was during Snowpocalypse was the windmills froze, uh, and, uh, uh, renewables were, I think, a twenty or thirty percent of the gen, uh, power generation. And basically they, they stopped producing and Texas didn't have enough in reserve to, to fill the gap and people died. But didn't Republican, didn't Texas the state subsidize, uh, renewables as well?
Again, that, that could be an entirely, uh, an entire other, uh, discussion, right? Just about that, but a, a good.
Believe me, believe me, I, I'm, 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 I'm regret, I don't like just talking about it in, in brief like this, but I'm just trying to use it as an example of how, good people can follow bad ideas, uh, and that perhaps a text it isn't, so isn't a panacea, but go, go ahead.
Sure. So we have to remember that a, a good chunk of that policy that was offered by the state of Texas was not just direct subsidies from the state, but was also meant to give a mechanism for municipalities, for all these people to capture federal money, right? So that's, that is, uh, ultimately money is always at the heart of issues like this. So, you know, one of the, one of the things that people don't understand related to the overpayment, uh, that Texas taxpayers make into the federal system is that all of that money that comes back into Texas, the vast majority that comes directly to the state of Texas or its political subdivisions comes either as matching funds or with massive strings attached. And so when you deal with these, you know, like that, the whole green energy subsidies from the federal government, so much of what Texas tried to implement was an attempt to recapture those tax dollars and bring them back into Texas. So, you know, look, there are greedy politicians here too. Uh, you know, we don't promise utopia on the other side of this. But we also have to remember that so much of what happens, not just in Texas, but in every other state, happens, uh, because our politicians at this level get to hide under the skirt of Washington DC. They either get to scapegoat it or because all of that circus in DC sucks all of the air out of the room, all of the oxygen and all the attention's focused there, very little attention is given to these people in, in, say, our states or our county governments or whatever. So you remove the federal government from the equation. You have them, uh, no longer picking and choosing winners with our tax money. You have that circus no longer being part of the twenty-four hour news cycle. You have a renewed focus and attention of the Texas voters and then things like that don't happen. Uh, we, we can, we have to remember that when we talk about things like Snowpocalypse twenty twenty-one or the border or any of those things, the central player in every single one of those things is the federal government.
Okay, okay. Well, I, 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 funny, I don't know enough about, um, about Snowpocalypse to, to, but I, I, you know, I do think there was a lot of joint culpability by Texas politicians.
Well, absolutely. Look, I, I'm not giving our guys a get out of jail free card. Um, you know, it, we, we looked at the governor and the lieutenant governor here and, and the legislature and, and we see that they, they, uh, shoulder a fair amount of the burden. You know, the, the board that makes up the Texas grid, which is ERCOT, you know, the, the, right, ERCOT, half of the board pre-Snowpocalypse were people that didn't even live in Texas, right? Including the, I believe it was the vice chair of the Board of ERCOT, who's, who's best known for his academic work in the carbon credit, uh, trade auction. Uh, you know, so, uh, yeah, there, there were some, there were some massive mistakes and our people will pay an ultimate penalty, a political penalty for that. But at the end of the day, when you look at the federal government's culpability in that issue, how do we here in Texas address that? Well, we don't, we only, we only get 38 congressmen. We get two senators and that's, that is the say that we have. It becomes a math problem at that point and we're not allowed or able to solve Texas challenges with Texan solutions without, without outside interference.
Okay, Daniel, thank you very much for coming on the show. It's been very interesting. I'd love to have more time to discuss Snowpocalypse and, and, you know, actually how this would look in practice. But I think you've given a lot of people a lot to think about. So the book is Texas, Why and How Texas Will Leave the Union by Daniel Miller. I assume you can buy it on Amazon and all good bookstores.
Best seller on Amazon, surprisingly, four different times. So, yeah, they can check out the book there. Or if, if they have more questions about Texas, I encourage people to go to the website, texanow.org, where we have the 100 most asked questions and answers about Texas there at that website.
What's Twitter, what Twitter handle, where would people find you on Twitter?
Oh, they can find me at the Texian DM.
The Texian, T E X I A N D M. Okay. Thank you, Daniel, and it's been a pleasure talking to you.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
There you go. I mean, I know, look, people laughed at Brexit, so let's not laugh at Texas. I just wonder if, if it'll be the panacea that Daniel Miller thinks it will be. If the money that they save from the, from the federal, what they say is the federal overspend or the, they give to the federal government that they don't get back. I wonder if it'll be put to good use when it comes back to Texas. Let's see. Now, to finish today, a nice wedding story, you know? Listen, wedding registries, they're just, they're just wonderful. This is from the New York Times. When Jan McCartney and Jay Belagna, Belagna made a registry for their wedding, among the typical items they included, plates, towels, tablecloths was a less traditional request, donations to the National Network of Abortion Funds. Ms. McCartney, 32, a comedy writer, and Mr. Belagna, a doctoral candidate at the Parti Rand Graduate School, said really raising money for abortion access as part of their wedding was a way to honor their mother, Karen Blumenthal, a journalist and author of Jane Versus, Jane Against the World, Roe v Wade and the Fight for Reproductive Rights, who died in 2020. But the couple who live in Los Angeles were also motivated to request donations by what they said was the more urgent case than furnishing their homes as newlyweds, protecting access to abortion. You're getting married and presumably you're going to have children. And you think, can you actually, can you think of a way, a way to start your married life to say, you know, one thing we want to state right from the beginning is we're, we're in favor of killing babies in the womb up to nine months, which is the law in many states in America now. Also, it's in honor of their mother who had them, so didn't have an abortion. So they're honoring a mother by supporting abortion. Okay. Also, like what kind of bubble do you live in where everyone that you're inviting to your wedding, you think they will support this and have no problem with this? And surely there must be someone in your families who does not agree with this and you, and it's not like supporting immigration or not supporting immigration or lower tax or higher taxes. This is a deeply moral issue to many people. Many people believe this is the killing of an innocent human being. So what kind of bubble are you in that you think that that is an appropriate way to start your married life? The article goes on and on, but as Dennis Prager said, leftists ruin everything. They ruin wedding registries. They, it'll be very interesting to see the midterms, to see whether this constant harping on about abortion has any influence or is it a liberal bubble? I mean, look at the people, you know, they're, it's almost like, they're almost like a parody of, of, of a far leftist couple. Jan McCartney, a comedy writer and Mr. Belagna, a doctoral candidate, who, and she's the mother of a journalist who wrote Jane Against the World. No, she's the daughter of a journalist who wrote Jane Against the World, Roe versus Wade and the Fight for Reproductive Rights. Look, I will be very, very, I, I, I don't have an answer to this and it'll be very, very interesting to see if this is just an obsession of the upper middle classes. Or is it a real topic for Americans? Do they, do they care about the end of Roe versus Wade? I don't have an answer to it. I'll be very, very interested after the November elections. I know the people who fear it the most are not the Democrats. They are in fact